Judge.
Mr. Smith.
He's dragging.
He's discussing paperwork for Jones, who is an accident. So you do this two weeks apart from being the two, two days that I had. And I must have shot on this one. Good at points as far as Monday of the month. So it's two for two titles. So try and get air in, Doug.
Glad to hear it.
Everybody really good.
He's not even driving behind his bike.
He's on the way to the car.
Always aggressive. He's got a very poor woman type of term. He was a little green from Jersey, but he just, he's so funny. At some point, he can't keep up.
Well, he was intimidating. He was a young detective out there. And he was the chief judge of the two thousand.
He talks like that.
Mm-hmm. He has a cheekhole. He was picking apart a couple of them. But you don't have a complaint with us.
He's a good attorney.
Under the name of this. I told my captain, I was going to ask you a question. I'm going to have seven questions and I will, of course, be very strict. I'm going to have one question, just like seven seconds, for me.
Because there's all new judges, he's probably super.
You need to follow from the outside. Are you ready?
All right, one minute. One minute.
Seven.
Okay, please order, start with pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Mike. Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
We have a quorum. Before we get started, I was given the commission date of June eighth, twenty twenty-one.
I would like to make a motion to approve the city council, the appointment of Doug Money as a commissioner of accounts and finances.
I'll second that motion. Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner, or Mayor Jones. Very good, Doug, if you'd like to come up, we'll swear you. Raise your hand, repeat after me. I am Douglas Money.
I am Douglas Money.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of commissioner of finance and accounts for the city of Bravewood, Illinois.
As commissioner of finance and accounts for the city of Bravewood, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right, at this time, we'll open up public comment. Is there anything in public comment today?
Evening, everyone. My name is Greg Joluk from one seventy-six Harbor Landing. Last Sunday, there was an incident in Lighthouse Cove where one of our residents collapsed due to a heat stroke. The Bravewood Fire and Police Department paramedics responded very quickly to the nine-one-one call and were able to stabilize the individual. Person is fully recovered, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank the police and fire departments for their dedication and service to the Bravewood community. Thank you. Secondly, I also want to take a moment to recognize the valuable service that John Gustad provides by live streaming these city council meetings. For the past few meetings, viewership of these meetings has been averaging one thousand views for every meeting. That's far more than the number of people who would be able to fit in this room, obviously. So, thank you for your service and providing this great information outlet to the people of Bravewood.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Smith, welcome back. At the last city council meeting, I requested that you provide the council with a month-by-month financial forecast for the streets department, for the salaries and benefits, expense line items, and your budget. By providing those numbers, you would be able to end the controversy about whether or not your proposed new hire will put your department over budget. Did you by any chance bring that document with you today?
I will not put my budget over. I have not, and you keep hollering about that, that the budget before I didn't, I turned money in if they had done what they promised, and I would never went over my budget, and I wish you'd just count that.
Well, there is an easy solution.
Wait a minute, that budget didn't get asked for me.
There is an easy solution to that. Numbers don't lie. Show me the numbers. They don't lie. Where's the number?
Next term, you can get in here and show people how well you can do it.
I don't want to get in there next term. I want you to do your job for this term.
Try to help us, try to help us put the marriage up.
Here's, I have a proposal for you, okay?
Have I went over my budget? Have I, am I over my budget?
I haven't seen the numbers come out yet.
I asked you, well, you, you got them. Listen, you're not over your budget until you go over your budget. The budget is a guideline. Listen, now, this is my fourth term, and I know what I'm doing, and I just appreciate you not trying to tire me up and try to down this town like you are.
Here's, here's an idea. I have over twenty years' experience with budgets and financial forecasting. I would like to see us get to a definitive answer with this issue.
Then if you're all that experience, then you know I'm, I'm okay.
No, because you haven't shown me any numbers. So here's what I propose.
You give him my, if you, can you, can you give him my, our budget, a copy of our budget?
I've, I've got the budget.
Well, then, what's, what you holler about?
I don't think you understand what a financial forecast is, and what I'm offering to do is, is to sit down with you and help you walk you through the process to create a financial forecast. What comes out of that exercise will be a document that shows if you will be within budget, and if not, one month you will be over budget. Will you accept my offer to help you out?
No comment.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the public comment?
Yeah, Jay Dixon, one ninety-five North Lincoln Street. I'd like to just say how well you just cleaned up that corner up there where the, the old tire place was, and that really looks nice. Whoever had put the charge of that, you did a great job.
Greg? Anybody else?
I like one good thing, is that.
Nicole Shores. I'm not going to say my address. Mr. Smith, were you aware that on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, you had OSHA come out and look at you? I know, you've been taught not to answer. It's okay. fourteen different citations. Are you going to take care of that? I take it, your no answer, your not answer is a no. That's okay. You know, this is the kind of stuff that you're supposed to be doing. Also, them guys out there, you don't need to hire more people. You need to be a leader. They need a leader, not more people. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
If you don't look at the local agreement, I am short two guys after now.
You don't need nobody. It's clear. There's grass not cut all over the place and guys sitting around.
Just look at the agreement with, that we had with, with Local one fifty. I had, supposed to have six people, and we've cut so much, and we, I don't see where.
Maybe if you spent your money in the four terms you were here properly, this wouldn't have happened. Just saying.
Anybody else on this public comment? All right, this time, we'll close public comment. All right, we need the approval of the minutes from May twenty-fifth. Motion to approve.
Who will make that motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Money.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's for the, or wasn't it?
Twenty-fifth minutes.
Oh, the minutes for last week. I can't vote for that, but I wasn't here. That's suspended.
Suspend you, okay. I've got the girls from Whitmore's, started planting flowers along the Welcome to Bravewood sign, so I just want to thank the guys for, because Whitmore's donates the flowers and the girls do it. Did a nice job, it looks pretty good. And we're going to start another room, or Welcome to Bravewood sign in the next week or so, off of one thirteen, one thirteen, in Colcy Road. With the old one over there, we're going to do another one like that there.
That'll be nice.
And that's all I've got. Tony?
All right, and just so everybody knows, the money that we're doing these signs with, most of it has been grants from Exelon. We always want to thank Exelon for putting their part in the, in the community. So they pretty much paid the entire one on that one, and then we've got over two thousand dollars from them going towards the next one. The other thing I have is I'd like to request a motion to approve an ordinance creating a citizens' beautification committee for the city of Bravewood.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Money.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries. And what we'll be doing is anybody that's, that's emailed me about being part of that, I will be input back with them this week, and then probably the next week, the ten days, we'll try and get a meeting here at City Hall together to kind of get that moving forward so we can start touching up the town even more. Couple of updates we have are alternate rise, where we, the city has requested a couple changes in some of the drainage systems and stuff that they have there, which we did last week, hoping to have that back in the next week or two. Myself, it's mostly us that's slowing these guys down because we want to make sure that everything on the city side is the way the city wants, and the engineer who's not here tonight, we want to make sure we do it so it's something that lasts forever, not something we're going to get in big hurry to get going and then wish we would have done it different. Same with the truck stop. We're still waiting on the engineers for the truck stop to do core samples on the frontage road to make sure that the frontage roads will hold up to the, to the capacity of more semi-trucks going up and down, even if it's just a short distance we get to take care of now. It could be a combined effort between the city and the builders to take care of that before it gets to the point where it gets destroyed and then it's all on the city. We had a couple more businesses come through last night through zoning, which we'll be bringing up to, or vote for the city council on the twenty-second, I believe, the next, next meeting, and that's all I have.
Our city clerk.
All right, well, I had a short statement tonight regarding this issue that's long plagued the city for the last month. The goal of my statement tonight is to put to bed an issue that has been a thorn in my side for the past two weeks. Last month, if we're really counting, and I'm going to be frank, I'm tired of it. I'm trying to do things right in this office, and it seems I cannot. Last meeting, I, I mentioned a letter that I provided to former Commissioner Saltzman and Commissioner Smith. A few days ago, I provided Commissioner Smith with another letter with three simple requests to bring this issue to a legal resolution. Commissioner Smith has thus far refused. I explained and showed him a similar letter that he provided to me for another employee a while back with the title, status change date, and new rate of pay. I have asked for the same letter in this case, and he has refused. The problem being created is we have an exceptional gentleman putting in hours with a city with no formal authorization for a hundred and fifty-two hours of work and an eight-hour holiday at basically what amounts to community service right now. I received an email earlier today from Local one fifty, which stated they will not start his insurance coverage without formal authorization. Furthermore, correct me if I'm wrong here, if we don't get this paperwork in proper order and an accident occurs, we're going to be in a real fix, and there won't be much of a budget left to complain about. What I'm asking for is very simple. With the authorization, I can get this gentleman compensated appropriately, justly insured, and the citizens of our city properly protected from preventable catastrophe. Commissioner Smith, can you provide this authorization to me by three P M. tomorrow?
If you not put all that other stuff with it, I'll have draw it up and get it to you. But I'm not, to authorize what you're saying is, they're saying, but we're not going to put all this other to it. Listen, I, you, I don't know why you're wanting the authorization of the money when the, when it's in that book of Local one fifty, and I cannot go beyond that in any way. And that's, you got it? And he was put in there on the date, you got the date? You got everything you need, and I don't know what you holler about.
I, like I said, Commissioner Smith, I have asked for the letter of authorization.
This has never been done before, and it's no, nothing calls, law calls for this. This is something you've, somebody's added.
Commissioners, or Mayor, or Mr. Terry, would you be able to provide me some direction on this?
I just, what did you say that, that the union said today?
Union said that they will not start his insurance coverage without formal authorization. They're waiting to hear from me.
So at that point, he is not in the union?
Correct.
That's up to the commissioners. I mean, the guy's doing, like I said, I know people are pointing fingers at us that we're trying not to hire somebody, all we're asking is done the proper way. Did you, or did you not receive a letter from Mr. Smith on the last, last employee hired stating he authorized the hire?
And that's what I outlined here, is that previously, I received a, an on-city letterhead from Mr. Smith, a title, his status change date, and his new rate of pay.
That was true. That was true, because now, well, he was hard part-time, and we bumped him up, and that was, right. But when you hire, you don't do that. Why you're adding to that, I don't know. And now, if you get, if you just take what you said, that, give me that, and we'll see if we can't get it done, that you just want the rate of pay authorized from that date you hired, that was hired, you can get that, but that's all you put in there.
Okay, you're asking me to type that up for you.
Captain, like, just like I said, and then we'll, we'll get it, take a look at it.
Okay, because, because basically, what, what we've run into is if we don't have a letter of employment, something like that, and something happens and it goes to court, the first thing.
Have come, Mr., have come, this has never been done for the last thirty years.
Because you haven't hired anybody since.
Oh, I've hired all, I, I, ain't no telling how many I've hired.
Not to Matt.
Listen, I bumped up Matt, and now you're talking about the budget, and like, there's enough money in this budget for, this guy's retired, he is paid from the other, we'll take it out, no problem. That's why that we're trying, trying to get it. Now, let me, let me explain to everybody here, whenever I, last year, they said, wait till this budget, and we put it out, the newspaper got it, it was published. Now, everything, every, one of the applications that was took, I took, and I was looking for a qualified person, because OSHA is on us, and I have to help, and this guy that I'm putting in there has got qualifications to cover that, to get him off of us. And that's why, that's why that I put him in. Now, listen, the difference in his pay and the difference in the rich's body, it will equal out, and you understand that, but you, I knew whenever you was talking about hard, that what was going to do, but it wasn't my place to get up and now say his retirement. I know what I'm doing. I'm not breaking no law.
Then prove it with a financial forecast and show us the numbers.
The clerk and myself are not mentioning the budget at all.
Show you the number, what?
We don't, we, we're not, it's not our place to deal with the budget. That'll be Mr. Smith.
It's not, it's not my place to sit there. It's not my place to set this wages. It is the Local one fifty, and, and this city council has got the wages. I cannot move them neither way. That's not, you break it all.
I don't care about the budget. We just want the person, we don't care about the person, who the person is. We just would like, since there's been past issues of, of people being sued over lesser things, we just want the proper notes that come with state and local.
You got it in there, if you'll just look at it in that book of it. The Local one fifty is there.
All of the paperwork on all of them state that there needs to be some type of letter offering him the job and just saying that you're offering him the job so that we, we can make it legal with the insurance to cover it that says he was offered a job, and we understand the pay. The pay, once he gets in the union, has to start at the base. That's, that's standard practice, not, I'm good with that. We just need an authorization.
Show, show that to the hardware, say, we've been doing that. And listen, the budget showed for this.
The only way I could rel, make this relatively feasible is, is there's a sixty-five mile an hour on the speed limit on the highway, and a lot of people drive seventy-five or eighty, and it's always good until you get caught, then you go, I guess it was sixty-five, I've never followed the rules before, but I'd like to start right now, and you weren't, so then you get ticketed for it. That's all I'm saying. I'm not wanting to argue with you.
Dan Rude, that is working with you, right?
No, he's not.
Yes, Tom Todd, the lawyer.
Yeah, I, no.
I was out there when he was talking to you, and you're supposed to cut that seven.
No, we, we had conversations when, when you were present with Mr. Rose, those are the extended conversations, we're all working together on any.
Why do I have to tell you what the wages is when it's in that book?
You don't, the wages, I agree with you on. We, we will follow, once he's in the union, we follow that. All we need is the authorization from you stating that, yes, you are employing, you are, you made him a job offer, just like you did with Matt.
Well, that's turning the obligation in, is what, what I had to do. I never go for it. You're creating some, uh, Adam, I, I was about to, what you're talking, is that word? I think that we'll, we'll be able to skip that. I'll, I'm not sure, but I think I'll get it for you tomorrow.
I, I, like I said, I'll be happy to type something up for you so you can read it before signing, before signing, but.
I'll get it typed up and written to you if you want to.
If you want to type it up, that's fine too. And I, either way, it works for me.
You want, you want the amount paid, and the hour, the date that he was to be hired, and I will sign that I'm hiring.
Very good.
Because it's legal, I run a check on it, and he's got so many qualifications that I need.
And that's fine, and like I said, all I want is the authorization that he's being hired from you so that I have something to give to Local one fifty and our insurance.
I'll have it working up that way, and that, but this other stuff, if you put them to it, is bogus.
What other stuff they put in there?
Well, you know.
I didn't, I don't, I have nothing, I'm standing back from this, I don't have nothing to do with it, because I'm being, my fingers pointed that I'm picking on certain people. I don't care who works.
One, two.
As they work.
Word that's work.
But they don't.
Three, four pages, and I'm not stupid. I realize I need a little more, but I'm not stupid. I'm not going to discuss what it is, I'm not signing that, because the lawyer says not to do it.
So you went out, hired your own attorney instead of using our attorney that we already paid?
No, I'm not, I, I just got a friend's attorney. I had a friend before he went to this, I do.
All right, I just wondered if you retained him, you have not retained him, okay?
I'll tell you, you're adding a lot of things. Number one, you've got a, a, a letter of something, it, it's not, not, it's not legal.
Hey, Fay, they're not picking on you. I've hired two secretaries and a couple of part-timers, and I've submitted a letter in their file, their date of hire, what their rate of pay was, and I, Commissioner Michael, you signed two of them for me because you hire part-time officers. So we do this in every frame.
Part-time, yes, part-time, you can say.
No, but I've done it with full-time too, and I have referenced to what their financial package is in the contract, so it's, it's not uncommon, and they're not picking on you.
If, if you.
As well as.
If you got a union, it's, it's based, and I have dealt with a union many, many times, and I, I like good fellowship with them.
So they're, Fay, they're talking about two different things. Number one, I might be misinterpreting, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Maney's looking for two things. Number one, a letter from you to the city saying, I hired this person on this date at this rate of pay, or at the, the base rate for the union, hold on, for the, for the union rate, okay? Then number two, they're asking for basically an employment notice, which is from the city to the employee, saying, you're an employee as of this date, you know, subject to this collective bargaining agreement. The, almost the same exact process as we've done for the city clerk, the city administrator, and the police chief, and we followed that same procedure with other employees within the police department and everything else. This has nothing to do with city ordinances, this has only everything to do with.
Why are, why are we starting that now?
Because how is your employee supposed to know what they're paying and benefits are?
We've never, we've never, we've never done that.
I understand.
You can set the basis, and you're supposed to be with, with.
This is a simple, this is a simple notice.
I, I will get, what, what, we're talking that, that, I, I think it will be okay, but on that, and we'll get, I'll get that done as soon as possible.
These are, these are things we're trying to do to protect the city.
But I'm not going to put all that other stuff in there.
Like, like Mr. Wallner just said, it's, it's something that, I don't know what previous clerks have done, I don't know what previous people have done, but I'm telling you what I'm going to do right now, and that's the right thing to do. So we're just protecting the city and your employee.
Can you correct me if I'm wrong, when Mr. Mr. Guyville and Mr. Smith came in the other day and you explained it to Mr. Guyville, did he have any issues with it?
No, Mr. Guyville, no.
Completely understood, he was happy.
He understood what I was asking for.
I've hired about fifteen people since I've been in this, the fourth term. This has never helped them before, and I've never had to drug test them, but I, they wanted a drug tester. But listen, why do you want to drug test that one, they're not drug tested? And you wrote me a letter saying it was, anybody that you hire is supposed to be drug tested, but one, the one I hired got to be drug tested, but the other, when you were hired out there, you wouldn't drug test it, would you?
It's, it's subject to the collective bargaining.
You drug tested?
Local.
It's just subject to Local one fifty.
Local one fifty collective bargaining agreement.
I think that all of commissioners, policemen, I always should be drug tested. If, if I'm willing to that, I don't care. You don't, this is no place for drugs. Am I right? This is no place for drugs.
Commissioner Smith. This is in the Local one fifty.
I'll, I'll get this reasonable, but taken care of.
All right, let's move on. Ebschew wrote that up for you.
But I'm not a new beginner here.
I'll get some written up for you, Fay, and we're going to move on, we'll move on from that topic, and we'll move to my FOAs. My FOAs were, were pretty.
I'll, I'll get it written up the way you, the way you said the ones there. I don't want a bunch of stuff added to it.
It'll be, it'll be plain and simple, Fay. We're going to move on from that.
But now, the, the amount of money is in the book, I go under there.
I got you, I got you. We'll get that taken care of.
Okay, well, we'll get it out, I'm writing it, and, and they start, we'll get that part done.
All right.
My, I just had two FOAs. I had one FOA for, for water billings for the elected officials. My, I just had two FOAs, I had one FOA for, for water billing for the elected officials and then one for OSHA, for OSHA's inspection, that brings me to forty-two FOAs at sixty-two hours worth of work, I'm done.
Okay, take it, you're doing a good job, by the way.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, you are.
All right, accounts and financing. We got a new guy. He's a guru. Hey, you got it? Oh, I'm sorry, sit, you're turning down.
Nothing to report tonight, Eric, thank you.
All right. All right, Doug.
I make a motion to approve the bills in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand one hun- excuse me, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and seventy-eight cents.
I second that. Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Money.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to pay payroll in the amount of eighty thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
I second that motion. Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Money.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Could you write that anything smaller than this? I'm not twenty anymore.
Put on your magnifying glass.
Magnifying glass, got it.
Throw the newbie under the bus. Uh, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, streets and public improvements.
Uh, I wanna, um, I don't know why we're not getting communication with our engineer on where we're at with the motor fuel and how much that we've got to spend, uh, it's running a little late if we don't get some streets fixed, 'cause if, when you put it out and wait till it gets, and it's too late, I don't, I don't want them putting it down when, so I don't even know how much, every three months, they used to get together with the engineer and the city clerk and then take care of it and I, and I need, but I don't know who, I've got some streets need fixed, but I don't know where I got the money, what how much, I do know when Todd left out, I had eighty thousand and I bought nothing but uh, salt and uh, gravel. And it's, I think if you don't, if we don't get any streets fixed, we're gonna have to get it on the ball, get something done.
Just a clarification of the eighty, the salt is about ninety thousand a year and the gravel was about fifteen, so that's a hundred and twenty thousand, so that eighty was gone.
Oh, yeah, but it's been two years ago and it, and it's, we're getting more, doubled from what we used to and should be quite a bit of money in there, but I don't know.
We spent a hundred and fifty thousand a year on salt and gravel, so we do have.
Yeah, I, I keep a count of that, I know what, how much is going in there, that, and automatically the state, it is, we got that laid out to, we got a bid out for it for next year, it'll be coming up now, but I'm talking about blacktopping some streets, school street, it needs to be fixed, 'cause it's half, half started and half not. And if you don't get on it, put that bid out, it's gonna be a little late. Now, another thing, whenever Rich Valadas, I'll get it explained to you, Rich Valadas' wages is so much higher than this, I know this, that we're just gonna meet, you didn't know that, I don't know why you wanna, why don't you talk to me?
I just offered to meet with you to work this out and you declined.
Why, why, why are you picking at me though?
Because you don't have the numbers, show me the numbers. A forecast.
We don't hide, we're not supposed to hide anything, that, our, my numbers is in the public, public stuff, if you ask him, he'll give you a copy.
That's the budget, you have a budget for four people, you're hiring a fifth person.
I have not.
You have to do a forecast that shows five people's salaries.
If you were, if you were listening, think straight, these guys are leaving and will only have two months and he's trying to work this in here, 'cause we have that money, we're not got to five, we should have six, but we've cut the budget.
Yes.
We, our.
You're approved with four.
Wait just a minute now, our union agreement had six men and you look at the book, I'm sure I do call our names and our bodies, this guy right here's dad was working, uh, there, with six people.
I, I believe what Mr. Smith's saying is that one person's retiring, right?
Yes.
So he's gonna have four and he's not hiring anybody else, so four is where he's gonna be, right?
If you were listening, it's what kind of.
Not hiring anybody else.
As of, as of August third, when he retires, yes.
Yes, wait.
Hiring before August third.
Just a minute, just a minute now, I know what I'm doing, I know what I'm doing, the wages of what I'm hiring is so gr- less than the wages he's got, overlapped, that budget will be all right. If you let me run my business and, and quit needling around and you don't know what you're doing, it's, I'll be all right there. There'll be, there'll be money left, I know what I'm doing, this is about the fourth term, now I'm leaving here and you can get in here, you're so good, you can just take that out.
Bye.
All right. Public council safety.
Hi, it's, it's all I got. From May twenty-fifth to June sixth, we had a total called a service of one hundred and fifty-nine with a total of four arrests, and that's all I have there.
All right, thank you. All right, um, planning the zoning.
Well, we'll have that on the next meeting. Public buildings and property, still gotta cover this board.
Public buildings and property.
I'm gonna fill in for the old guy.
Your most third looking.
Figuratively, figuratively, or?
We finished spring flushing Friday, June eleventh, or we'll finish it, um, we received our new twenty-twenty-one N D P E S super permit, um, this is where they tell us what we have to monitor and every year it gets more stringent, um, and they did this time too. Every time they make the monitoring tougher, it costs us more money because we have to pay for more samples, more testing, uh, more monitoring. We finished our manual sewer samples, uh, the A C system at the water plant, uh, finally died, uh, the old one was corroded from the hydrogen sulfide, uh, the new one should be here by the end of the month, uh, we put new batteries in the battery backup in well five, and those of you that have seen the cotton flank around town, that makes a mess on our filters, so we cleaned the filters, the A C systems, and we have makeup air systems that exchanges the air in buildings. Our new subsurface geode system is delivered and we got a short class on it Friday, it's pretty slick, uh, we're gonna be sharing it with Commissioner Smith's department also, it allows them to track, uh, just about anything in town that they want to, even his culverts can be put in, it was showed to us, uh, they're able to show exactly where the culvert is, where it goes underground, uh, even for the valves in town, uh, the buffalo boxes in the fire hydrants, it can show when it was last exercised, uh, how many turns to close, how many turns to open, there's so much information that they're able to put in, once this information is entered, they simply use their phones, their phones will show them where everything's at, uh, comes up on a G P S map, it's all done with G P S, uh, I was really impressed with it, I was looking forward to this, but it blew away my expectations of what this was, I didn't expect it to be able to do everything that it can do. So that was a nice thing, the guys were even excited because it, it's gonna make their job easier and again, like every time we talk, it's efficiency, it's gonna make them much more efficient now, when they go do a watering, they're able to drive along, set it, hit the button, drive, set it, hit the button, they don't have stop truck, turn it flash on, get out, grab the equipment, walk over, it's much more efficient for them, saves them a whole bunch of time. Uh, with the system that we have, uh, we're doing a small upgrade on it and that will allow Commissioner Smith's department and my department to use the same system at the same time, so we will have multiple licenses for it and, uh.
You're talking about on getting that money to do this, is that what you're speaking of?
No, yeah, we'll take care of it.
Yeah.
Our department.
Okay.
But you guys.
You, you know, I thought you was gonna try to get some money, now we're running on antique stuff that are, and we're running with need of what, what you were talking about, as long as it's public work to, to get, get new equipment and better equipment, we need it, 'cause we're always breaking down, you know that, on those different things. And, but I, but you're, you're, you're dropping that down for the time being, uh, it, it was in the agenda, on the agenda that you wanted, uh, to borrow some money.
But that's something totally different than this.
Okay, all right, oh, okay.
This is already been delivered, they delivered it Friday.
I, I do think that we need that.
And your guys were there, it, both departments were there on Friday when they came out and delivered it to the demonstration, so it was really nice that they all got to work together, they all got to see how it works, uh, and they know how to use it together. The nice thing is, this extra little thing is gonna let us use it simultaneously, so they're putting a culvert in when we're working on a water pipe, we can both use the, the system at the same time, we don't have to wait till one's done, pass it to the other. That's all I have, thank you.
All right. Planning zoning for the next meeting. Anybody got anything on their old business? Anybody got anything on their new business? All right, the next regular meeting is June twenty-second. A motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. I second that.
Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Money.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
We are adjourned. All right, thanks everybody for coming out.